Yes, there's a little bit of a lag, but it's not bad.
Okay, perfect. We are up and worked through the glitch, so I apologize for that minor delay. There are so many. If you'd like to, go ahead and start meeting.
Okay, great. And can the attendees hear us as well?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. So, welcome to Strategic Planning Special Meeting on Thursday, April 9. And getting a little bit of background. Okay, we're good. This meeting is being held virtually, so I understand with your few technical issues that we're working through, but thank you very much for this will be beginning at 6:05 PM. If we could begin with a roll call, please.
Councilmember Doloso.
Here.
Councilmember Lamon.
Here.
Councilmember Harvey.
Here.
Vice Mayor Morris.
Here.
Mayor Skelman.
Here. And then if we can go ahead and mute ourselves for the presentation and then just unmute for any questions. Thank you so much.
Mayor Skelman, if you can hear me, we can move on to public comments.
Okay, terrific. So pursuant to California Government Code Section 54953, members of the public wishing to address the council or board may do so at the beginning of the special meeting, and such comments shall be limited to the special meeting topic. Just to alert the members of the public who are attending, we are also going to open it up for public comment after each of the three sections. Okay, is there anybody who would like to comment?
Yes. So we'll start with Jenny Blaker. Jenny, if you can hear me, you can go ahead and talk.
We can hear you, but it's very faint.
I have no particular comment right now. Thank you.
Okay, moving on. We've got Lori Alderman next. Lori, go ahead.
Cancel this meeting. You're doing it against the Brown Act. This was a regular city meeting. You only gave 24 hours and 10 minutes notice. There was, we have not been presented with the meeting materials that's required by law, plus it's an ADA violation. You have, you require 48 hours for ADA accommodations, and you don't, and you gave 24 hours and 10 minutes. I request that this meeting be adjourned and you properly and legally, legally set it at another date where you provide all the information as legally required. That's it.
Okay, next we have Neil Hancock. Mr. Hancock, would you like to speak?
I have nothing I'd like to say. I'm muted.
Okay, great. Thank you. And with that, that is the rest of our, that is the last of our attendees. So if you'd like to go to the study session, Mayor Skelman. Okay, thank you very much. We'll open it up for, I believe we're starting with, is it Mr. Obed or are we starting with Angela Quarter?
The, hello, Mayor, members of the council. So Angela will be taking the first slide deck, but I just wanted to introduce everybody. Angela and myself will be doing the presentation, and all the department heads are here as well to answer questions as we get into some of the strategic planning slides a little bit later. And with that, I will just turn it over to Angela so she can lead us off.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers, fellow staff and citizens. Just want to make sure I'm being heard.
Yes, indeed.
Perfect. So usually we don't get to talk numbers during our strategic planning as we focus more on the goals and objectives that the city has for overall citywide as well as each department. But due to these unprecedented times, we thought it was really prudent to share some analysis that we continue to use to evaluate both our historical trends as well as our future projections for our fund balance and revenues for the city. So we wanted to keep this short and brief, but still give you enough detail to really give an idea of what we're thinking right now. So in that vein, we have an analysis where we're going to look at the last 10 fiscal years and the economic effects during those years on both the city's revenues as well as the fund balance. And alternatively, we're going to use some economic projections based on grades from GFOA, the SMOF, as well as our revenue consultants that we have that continue to help us project where we are expecting to be going forward. Please note that these are really projections and simply that. They're just based on very simple assumptions or deemed to just be conservative so that we can properly plan for these types of emergencies. We're continuing to meet with these consultants as well as go to many, many strategic meetings about planning for these types of events, and we'll continue to report back with new updates that we have. So over the last 10 years, the city's revenues have had an average growth rate of just over 5%. And while this chart really shows a steady increase in revenues, it also shows how variable it can be due to the sudden changes in the micro and statewide economy. Let me sit on there for a second. This is just the general fund revenue. I don't know if I mentioned, we're just focusing on general fund. Alternatively, over the past 10 years, the city's revenues, sorry, fund balance have had an average growth rate of just over 12%. We've continued to maintain, as we've continued to maintain the expenditures and build a sufficient revenue reserve fund to continue funding new significant capital improvement projects as well as other increases in expenditures and projects going forward. So where we're going from here is really, how do we take that historical data and build out what our expectations should be going forward? In order to do that, we really looked at other economics economists and what they're thinking. So in building assumptions, we first look at what types of impact we feel the current emergency is expected to have on our local economy. And based again on those many sessions that we've been attending on the best practices during this time, as well as continuing to forge myself on media and what's economically happening and what impacts things might have, it looks like we're really heading to two different types of scenarios. The first type of scenario is called a V-shaped recession. And the second scenario, which is less likely, is more of an L-shaped recession. We believe that likely, the scenarios are more likely to be a small V-type recession for Cotati or a large V-recession with a little bit of a longer tail. So what is a V-shaped recession? V-shaped recession is a sharp but brief recession that is considered really the normal shape of a recession. An example that we pulled for this, just to kind of show you what it looks on a GDP curve, it's from the 1953 recession, which was caused by a sharp raise of interest rates brought by the Fed. Alternatively, the L-shaped recession, as you can see in the graph, is a deeper, longer. It still has a sharp decrease, but it has that longer tail on the end, kind of flattening out the back end of the V.
Hey Angela, can you, can you advance the slide from your computer there?
I can.
There we go. Thank you.
That makes more sense. So this really occurs when a company has a severe recession and does not return the trend line back for many, many years, if ever. This is not something that we're projecting to happen because we have had that sharp influx of new types of revenue, and the federal government and state government are jumping in right away to help the economy bounce right back. 2008, there was a longer timeframe to push out money and funding out to projects versus now it's stimulus right away in order to assist in bringing that line back up in a much quicker fashion. So here again, so we're talking about more, instead of what the L is, it's more of what's a V-shaped recession, what we're expecting for Cotati. So the recession in 1990 and 1991 are the recession where really lasted eight months, where it was a small, that's that small V shape we're going to talk about when we're looking at our projections, versus a large V, which is really that Great Recession 2008. Even though they do still say it's an L, it is still a V because they did inject the funds. It just took a lot longer. We're thinking it's not going to be that bad again. It would be more of just a three-years possible extension. So again, like I said, I've been focusing on media and playing, you know, getting in there with everything that, when you can't sleep at night. So one of the quotes I saw on Forbes was that the recovery is most likely to begin as a V, but because of the economic damage done by shutting down part of the way up, the raising leg will flatten out and have a much lower upward slope. So again, this was not that long ago. But again, we, we know that the stimulus money is coming back out. California did a lot more in advance to deal with the ramifications much more quickly. And so we're really not thinking that the longer V is going to be where we are. We feel like it's going to be more of the short term, but we want to keep an eye on the potential of it and know what could happen. So this is where we get into our projections. So again, we're looking at the general fund revenue projections, and this is what happens when we look at a small V recession. So we're really looking at, you know, Cotati's revenues are really focused on sales tax. So even with that 15% decrease in sales tax for this fiscal year in 1920, and then also the decrease in other revenues, it's bringing us right down where we could have a total loss around $3 million over the next four years in our revenue stream before we really can pick back up. And unfortunately, that's at that same time where we have that Measure G expiration. And that's highlighted on the side is the 0%. You see the transaction tax. That's at Measure G, Measure A. So that's, again, you see that drops right down to zero in 2025. So again, here's that large V and what our expectations are for just our revenue stream going forward if we do have a much deeper recession that lasts a lot longer and we have that longer tail end on the back. So this is looking out ten years, and it is just so we can properly plan and know that we can set ourselves up to continue to succeed for our citizens in the future.
So Angela, actually, can you go back one slide?
Yeah. Large V, go back. There.
Okay, thank you. So this is, this is the small V. This is at least what people are considering to be the more likely scenario. I mean, everyone knows that the first half of this calendar year is going to be, it'll be a combination of both deferred tax revenue and also lower tax revenue because of the impacts of the COVID virus. So those, so really what's, you know, what people are trying to, everyone's trying to figure out is what does that mean to the economy? How long does it take once the restrictions are lifted for the economy to pick back up and at what speed would they pick back up? So in this more likely scenario, you can see that the revenue, it drops down for the next year or so, and then it's projected to sort of come, start coming back up at that point. And then in 2022, that second dip is, isn't really having, doesn't even have anything to do with the economy. That's, that's what the effect of Measure G sunsetting would do to the revenue. So Angela, can you go back to the, to the reserve slide as well, the general fund reserve?
I don't know where the slides went, Lauren. Can you help? Thank you.
There you go. Perfect. So we, we kind of skipped over this pretty quickly, but it was just a couple of things I wanted to point out on the slide. So this is the historical general fund balance. The balance line is the blue line, of course, right? And then the year-over-year change line is the orange line. And so the orange line shows the volatility as sort of the, you can see the overlaid economic shocks that happened at various points historically. So 2010, if you look at, we're 2010, we're just kind of in the Great Recession. That's where Measure A was, right? The reserves were very low at that point. And redevelopment went away, which created a large hole in the city budget, like many cities in the state. And so Measure A helps address that issue. And then you can see we're slowly building our general fund reserve until about, until about 2014. But this is more, this is what I would consider more of an operational reserve, a reserve that would allow the city to operationally function through different, you know, minor economic cycles. 2014 is Measure G, so that, that general fund reserve, that is what's allowing us to implement some major capital projects. So that, that goes above, you know, that allows us to have our operational reserve, but also, as you, as you know, we have excess reserve that we need, that we need for capital projects. And so the street projects and, you know, some of the park projects were about to start. That's all because of the, the additional reserve that we have now. And then, you know, going back to those slides, Angela, you want to run, I'm sorry, run back to the little V slide one more time? And so, this is the last thing I'll point out, and I swear I'm done talking. So on the small V slide here, the operational reserves are intended to address this exact thing where you're looking at an economic dip between now and, you know, potentially 2022. And that's why, you know, that's why cities have reserves or any well-run organizations can have reserves to be able to weather those ups and downs in the economy. The, you know, but with 2022, with Measure G, that's, that's kind of a different type scenario that, we're not going to talk about a lot today, but that is, you know, certainly a concern as to what we, you know, how we, how we address this moving forward. With that, that was all I wanted to add. Thanks, Angela.
So that concludes the presentation.
Okay, so Lauren, open it back up for public comments. See if there's any attendees who wanted to comment on the financial projections that were presented. Thank you, Angela.
Sure. Let's start with Jenny Blaker. Do you have any comments?
No, not right now. Thank you.
And next is Alderman.
I think that the projection is just a model, but, and we don't really have, have the, the whole state does that. I have no idea what's going to happen in the future. I'm concerned on the emphasis on city projects. You're not providing any services during the, to the citizens. And to have that be the focus is not what should be happening at this time of emergency. That's it.
And Mr. Hancock.
Oh, you're muted by host. You are unmuted by host. Yes, thank you for the projections. I think it's a good idea to just go through those projections, look for the future. So no further comments.
Great, thank you. Mayor Skelman, that will do it for public comment.
Great, thank you guys very much. So we'll move on to the second portion, which is going to be calls and objections. And just to clarify, nobody got any of this meeting material. It's all just being presented right now. So thank you so much.
Madam Mayor, this is.
Sorry, I just saw your hand up. Go ahead, John.
Thank you very much. I just had a question for Angela. In looking at the slides and the general fund projections on there and the revenues, there was really no significant change at all really in the property taxes?
No, so we're currently not, because it's not a housing-based financial crisis. We're not seeing much. There is a small decline. If you see, it's not going to be increasing on the estimates. So with a small V, we're seeing it really, people are going to get right back to work within eight months. They'll back up, get their rents paid, so landlords are happy and paying their mortgage. Regular employees are paying their mortgage, and property taxes are going to be remitted, and they're going to be delayed. So we are expecting a delay. But that's more of just a, with the county. So we're not expecting a decrease in valuation of housing at this time. And so that would not decrease those expectations for property taxes.
And, and that you're looking at on an eight-month window for the disruption on that?
Right, correct. It's going to go up a little bit. So for property taxes, yeah, we're just seeing it really affecting this, this calendar year and, and not as much going forward into the future with that small V. When we get into the big V projections, we do have a little bit of a decrease. It goes from 5% next year to 3%. So we do see, we, it could, if people aren't able to get back to work quickly and efficiently in order to pay their property taxes, then that would then affect, of course, another housing crisis or issue, which, but we're not seeing that because California was already in a housing crisis of another sort where we don't have enough housing. So we're not really seeing it as a big decrease in our property tax revenue.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, and I apologize for not bringing it back to the council. It's just an unusual setup. So if anybody else had any comments, please let me know. Okay, since nobody's getting quick on the unmute themselves, we'll move on to the next section. Thank you, Mr. Obed.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. So this is our, this is the section where we just run through, you know, the, kind of what we've been working on, what our goals are, and what we're thinking we would be looking forward to next year. And this is, so, so remember at this point, this is the, you know, when we look at projects, we look at projects from a staff-strange perspective. We're not necessarily applying budget numbers to them at this point. So things can change, especially, you know, in light of some of the projected revenue scenarios that we're still evaluating right now. So. There we go. Okay. So here's some, just some major events that I think are worth noting that we are, we're still in this fiscal year, but I think they're some of the highlights, at least as I see them. We, after, after several years of work, we re-adopted our emergency plan. And there's a revised, updated emergency plan. It was really, it was a lot of work from the top to bottom to go through the entire plan. I was doing that, you know, with staff in the city manager's office, staff in the police department, and really staff in all the departments. So it was a big undertaking. We also moved forward with a new code compliance process, something that's much more efficient. And so we're able to better respond to residents that have concerns about things. Before, the process was very unwieldy and cumbersome, and it wasn't easy to do, to do things quickly, and it was very staff-intensive every time we had to touch on it. This is the South Sima Business Park bond reissuance. And I just put this in there because I think this was a, this was a great example of a win where, in this case, Angela brought this to me and said, hey, you know, bond rates are low, and we have this existing environmental bond that's paid by the property owners, like the cottages out on the west side. And we could easily refinance this bond given the current environment and save them a lot of the property taxes. And so it was a, it was just, I think, a win, a win-win for everybody. We, we were able to lower everyone's property tax out there and do it at very minimal cost and do it fairly quickly. We also, this year, instituted a ban on roundup for all city operations. So that was something that, there was quite a bit of discussion last fall about that. And we also adopted an integrated pest management plan for city operations to provide a more transparent document for the public so they know how we, how and when we use the types of, you know, weed control and parks and landscape trips and so forth. So it's good communication tool as well. The polystyrene ordinance, we, as you all know, we did introduce that. And the Waste Agency was in the process of reaching out to the businesses again about the, about the straws, that wrinkle of it. And it's, everything's moving forward, but we're just on a temporary hiatus until we can get some breathing room with the current COVID issues. The Parks Capital Plan, that was several years in the making, really. The first time we had looked at all of our parks and brought in residents and really had a holistic discussion about what type of things people wanted to see in the parks. So it, it was, it's a great tool for us to be able to think about conceptually what kind of improvements we'll go in what parks, so that as funding becomes available, we can start prioritizing those and getting them. we can start prioritizing those and getting them. And then also this year, a big investment in roads. You know, this has been an ongoing thing. An ongoing investment strategy of the council is to invest significantly in roads and try to, you know, try to quickly get to a point where the amount of money that you need to spend in roads starts flattening out into a more preservation, primarily preservation mode, as opposed to some areas of reconstruction that we're doing now that are more expensive. And then, of course, in the midst of all this, we had two major emergencies in the county. The first being the PSPS and the Kinkake Fire. And then the other, I don't think I have to tell everyone what that one is. We're right in the middle of it right now. So as we, as we approach 2021, we're continuing to evaluate the impacts on sales tax primarily due to the, due to the COVID issues that have shut down a lot of the economy. And hopefully with the stimulus and other measures that are in place and some of the delays and that the state has taken delays in tax receipt. And also, the county is delaying the receipt of, or I should say not delaying, but they're not penalizing for delays in property tax right now. So they're, they're trying to, on a lot of different fronts, trying to help out businesses and trying to keep them viable through the, at least the most severe part of the response to the COVID issues. And then also trying to keep, you know, individual citizens able to, if they can't go to work, able to continue to have some revenue to be able to exist through this initial response period. So even so, it's expected to create some economic problems and some impact, as I said, primarily to sales tax. It's also going to delay the timing of things, delay the timing of property tax receipts and delay the timing of sales tax receipts. PERS is sort of an underlying thing that continues to be something we have to watch closely because PERS is, you know, it does depend, but on a more long-term, more long-term basis on the rate of return they get in the markets. So if the economic impact is prolonged from COVID, then that could start actually leading into some of the PERS returns, which is something that all the cities in the state of California have to be paying close attention to. Before COVID, there was a whole landslide of housing legislation. And so we're still in the process of getting all that implemented like every, basically every other city in the state. So that continues to be an area of focus for the rest of this year. And finally implementing new economic development elements, which we, we were a planning commission earlier this week, and we're going to be coming to council soon to talk about some of the zoning code revisions and zoning table revisions that seem to make sense. And actually, it might be timely, given the economic environment we might find ourselves in in the next year. And then this is the last slide, Mayor, and then I'll take a pause for a second if anyone has anything that they want to ask questions about. But these were the standing strategic goals of the city council. And I don't have the objectives, but they are the same as they have been. But at a high level, it's ensure long-term vitality for the city, provide core services consistent with what the community expects, provide opportunities to increase efficiencies across the city, and then always look for opportunities to engage the community and make sure they're informed about what we're doing in the city so that they can weigh in if they have comments, questions, or concerns. So I'll just stop there for a second and see if anybody has any questions or comments.
This is John. I do have a question, if I may.
Hi, John.
Thank you, Mayor Skuman. Thank you, Damian. The, I'm assuming that we haven't heard anything yet from PERS because it's so new and what the effects might be on the discount rate?
I haven't heard anything definitive from PERS at this point. I think, I think like everyone, they're waiting to see if this is a short-lived, sort of small-V-type recession, or if it's something that's more prolonged, that would require maybe some policy action on their part.
Uh, thank you.
Are there any other questions from council members? Otherwise, we do have an attendee that's questioned. Okay, Lauren, can you put on, I believe it was Jenny Blaker's?
Yeah, of course. Thank you. Can you hear me? Yes. The one thing I don't see mentioned here is anything to do with passing a climate emergency resolution back in November 2019. And I would, I'm wondering to what extent the climate emergency resolution has influenced Cotati City policy and how, going forward, it can be used as a lens to focus and to judge policies by. In other words, to create policies that align with the climate emergency resolution. Here we are in the COVID-19 crisis, but we're also in the middle of a global climate crisis as well, and we shouldn't forget that. So how do, how do city policies align with that? Thank you.
Did you want to...
I heard you.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. Sorry, I didn't want to jump in there unless you wanted me to respond. So I, you know, I think it, well, first of all, I'd say the resolution from, you know, from everything that we've talked about at the city is both a sort of a statement of principles that have been long-held at the city, but more like on the ground. You know, there's both, I mean, from a variety of fronts, we're continuing to push in all facets of our operations and, you know, and policies, climate measures. So in the development world, you know, there's the Climate Action Plan, which is a guidance document that we, that we work with developers on so that they can build in greenhouse gas reduction measures. But some of the state policy, of course, is trying to move towards transit-oriented development. And of course, we've had a long-term policy of prioritizing infill development here and mixed-use development to try to reduce commute time, you know, commute distances. And in the utility world, we're, you know, we've been spending and continue to spend a lot of time making our operations more efficient, more energy-efficient. And, you know, that goes, that goes from, you know, fleet vehicles to, you know, pumping systems to, you know, closer tracking of our water systems so that if there are any leaks of any type, we know about them right away and we can, and we can address them so that, you know, wasted water is basically wasted pumping, which is energy. You know, we're working, continuing to work with Sima Clean Power on some of their initiatives for EV charging and solar systems. And a couple of years ago, we did also, I mean, this predates, of course, the resolution, but we did a top-to-bottom energy retrofit, lighting retrofit, both our streetlights, but also within our city buildings. So we're always, we're always looking for ways to do things in a more climate-friendly way, both from, I'd say, from an operational standpoint, but, you know, certainly what I've seen from the policy level, pushing that as well.
Okay, thank you. Questions from the panelists, or should we move on? Okay, not seeing anybody quickly unmute themselves or hold up their hands, so go ahead, Damian.
All right, thanks, Mayor. Okay, so this is, this sort of sets the stage for where we're at a full of policy, kind of a, through a general policy perspective, you know, how we're going. And I will say too, just on that prior question, embedded in the council policies and goals, even though it's showing the high level, there are also, you know, climate and operating, operating in a more climate-friendly way is, is one of the, has also been a focus of objectives. And so the presentation is really at a higher level. So this is sort of a proposed focus for 2021, which builds off the prior slide. And economic development continues to be, I think, a priority. It has been for the last several years for the council, and I don't think anything's changed at this point, especially given the COVID issues right now. And, you know, the focus has been on existing opportunities, things that we could turn around fairly quickly that would, that would help the, help the city and ultimately put the goal of helping, helping the city thrive, helping the, you know, helping the residents achieve the goals that they want in terms of services and infrastructure. And then, secondly, evaluating key market changes, which, you know, obviously we're in one right now, but adapt to the reality. And this was more about, the adapting was really more about the retail environment, how the retail environment has changed dramatically. And so this, this goes to some of the economic development changes that are, that are working their way through the public hearing process right now. And, and that's not just, obviously, it's not just greenfield development. It's our existing businesses, ways that we can help them be more agile and, and respond to the business reality and experiment with things. So then the last thing is removing some key barriers for our infill sites. Infrastructure, continue, a continued focus on, I don't have it here, but utilities, but also, you know, roads and parks with the Park Master, or Park Capital Plan recently, and the council's multi-year heavily, heavy investment in roads. So that we can, from a fiscal standpoint, we can, we don't have to continue to spend as much money each year on roads because we can move, like I said earlier, to a preservation, a preservation program, which also, by the way, smoother, more, I guess, more well-maintained roads also improve gas mileage, so. The tie-in there. And then outreach and communication. So continuing just to personalize and expand our communication with the public. And that can, that can go every, go from anything from these meetings tonight to our website, to our social media platforms, to our recreation programs, to our utility mailer. So I'll just run through this department, and then I'll, I'll pause for a moment. So in the managers' department, and this includes recreation, some of the, some of the major pushes that I see coming up for this next fiscal year is continuing to support the housing legislation implementation. So, you know, a lot of the, a lot of the housing is, is going to support what we're proposing, is going to support both people's housing needs, but also state requirements and hopefully fall within the character of Cotati. So recently, we did the ADUs and the ADU legislative update. And we're also starting to work on the cottage housing ordinance. So we're working on phase one of the economic development work, and I see a possible phase two coming next year. And, you know, we'll talk more about that when we bring this to council. So the cannabis land use ordinance and tax resolution renewal. The tax resolution is due for, just to check in this year. And the land use ordinance, that's also just to check in on that because we were one of the early municipalities to move that forward. And so the state has, the state has changed some of how they do, how they do cannabis permitting at a state level. So in some ways, our, our land use language is a little bit out of sync with the state. And I don't know yet if it's actually a problem, but we just need to dig into that a little bit this year and see if there's anything that needs to be cleaned up, just to make it clearer for everybody. Rhonda Fletty Ranch operations, so the construction will hopefully be done in the summer and then we'll be moving into a new operational mode at that point with more community programming and more, just more general programming, all types. Prop 68 is this state proposition for parks. We put in an initial application, and they have several cycles of it. We weren't successful in the first cycle, but will be another cycle coming up. So that will be a push again this year. Continuing to do online, you know, move to online services and content development. And this is a trajectory, trajectory we are already on, but given the current situation, we've dramatically accelerated that. And I see it just be continuing to be a trend, just to allow people to, to find things easier, to be able to do things on their own when, when they want to do them, rather than being stuck to normal business hours. So some segment of the population, some segment of our customers always are looking for these types of, these types of services. And so we want to meet them where they are. We are proposing here to shortly start a review of our, these are sort of our administrative fees. So that would start this current fiscal year, but move into next fiscal year. And this is just a renewed fee study, just making sure that all of our fees are in line with the cost of service, because we have a requirement to, to have our fees in line with our cost of service. And finally, the city hall refurbishment. This refers more to, you know, some of the exterior painting that we have planned coming up, as well as some carpet change-outs and maybe some changes in the council chamber. And then finally, election. So as everyone knows, there's an election coming up this year. And presuming it stays on schedule in November, we're all focused on pushing that forward. And sort of as a subset to this, we're also, we also recently completed our community survey. I don't know if we've done for a couple of years now. And I anticipate, you know, moving, you know, bringing that community survey information forward and also starting to have a discussion, sort of in the context of our long-term financial projections of what we want to, what we want to do as a community, how we want to move forward. And that could, that would be probably late spring or early summer. So there'll be more discussion, probably around the budget workshops on that. So I'll pause here for a moment if anybody has any questions, Mayor.
Okay, are there any questions from council?
One quick question, if I might, Madam Mayor.
Go ahead.
I just wanted to ask the city manager on the Prop 68 Parks Grant Application. In our initial past, did we get any useful feedback to perhaps better inform our next application? I know that happens sometimes, and sometimes that increases the odds. So I was just curious if you were able to solicit any of that?
Yeah, so initially, we didn't. They were kind of running behind in their grant reviews. And they might have, at this point, Ashley, who was the lead on that, was trying to get ahold of them, the person that was grading these, and get some feedback. I haven't heard anything definitive from her, but I, we will continue to check in on that because, as you said, it is useful feedback if you, if you can get it, for sure.
Yeah, I'm sure they're very busy and in a little difficult time for everybody right now. But if the opportunity arises to do that, I'm glad you guys are on. Thank you.
Yes.
Okay, any other questions from council? All right, not seeing any. Lauren, can you check with the attendees? I believe Blaker had her hand up.
Yeah, Jenny Blaker, if you'd like to go ahead with your public comment.
Thank you. Just following on from my last comment about the climate emergency resolution, Damian mentioned quite a bit about roads, but I'm wondering about the update of the pedestrian bicycle master plan and doing things to help encourage... of the pedestrian bicycle master plan and doing things to help encourage reduce of vehicles. I think in Sonoma County, greenhouse gas emissions are about 60%, uh, sorry, vehicle emissions provide about 60% of Sonoma County's greenhouse gas emissions. And so getting lower use of vehicles is really important. And I know the city was looking at updating the bicycle and pedestrian master plan. Is that still on track to happen early this year? Thank you.
Okay, Damian, go ahead.
Yeah, so yes, the bike and pet master plan is still on, is still scheduled to be updated. Although I think it might be later this summer or fall. I don't have the exact timing, but it is still scheduled this year.
Okay, it looks like that might be it for questions. Do you want to move on to the next slide?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, so for each of the departments, I'm going to make a pass through here. But if any of the department heads have anything to add, as, as I go through this, please feel free to jump in. So administrative services, these are some of the projects we're looking forward to this coming year is INCODE. So INCODE is our financial system. It's the accounting, budgeting system essentially. So it, it's not like an update to Microsoft Word. When you do these kind of big enterprise system updates, it's a kind of a big deal, multi-month type process. So our current version is becoming less and less supported. So we're just moving to a version, the same software. We're also, we're also looking into getting a little bit more active in some of our investment management as, as we talked about at mid-year, a lot of our, a lot of our reserves right now are held in LATH, which is a state, sort of a state managed cash program. And, and so we were looking at potentially getting an investment, some investment advice from a municipal standpoint, of course. And that's something that we're looking at doing this coming year. Also fixed asset and service order module implementation. So fixed assets are like, you know, large physical tangible things, right? So, you know, we have to, we have to inventory those and account for them and then report on them financially as part of our financial reporting. And then the service order module is sort of an internal service request process where someone can put in a service order and it goes to someone who can ideally address that service need internally. And this is the same way too, that like when we get a call from the public, for example, that call can be put into a service order and then tracked, sent out to the department. Municipal online payments implementation. So we already have started doing this and we just continue to anticipate pushing this out. So again, this is online services. So rather than having people need to physically come in to, to do things and make payments, we're just looking to move more and more of our processes online. So that way people can, they can come in and, you know, see us if they want. Or they can, you know, if they don't have the time, if they're too busy, they can do it at night at their convenience and pay that way. So we're continuing to move those, move that direction. Digital documentation and storage evaluation, that's from the administrative services perspective. That's, you know, like all of our accounts payable and accounts receivable, especially with the INCODE 10 upgrade, what the, what the best solution is there for not retaining reams and reams of paper files. So the policy update, Angela, if you're there, I'll just skip over this and maybe you can follow up with what that, honestly, I'm not totally clear on what that one was. But we have, next down, we have pension planning and a 115 trust. So getting to the first questions that we talked about earlier, a 115 trust is basically a city managed trust to pay pension costs. And that's a, you know, sort of evaluating whether that's something that would be beneficial or not for the city. Utility shut-off procedures reporting. So with the, with the new procedures that we put in place just earlier this year, there's a reporting process that goes along with that to the state. So we're, we'll be doing that this year for the first time. And always looking at our debt financing and seeing if there's better products out there. So if there's a capital project, does it make the most sense to cash fund it? Or does it make more sense to debt finance it? It really is going to depend on cost of the debt financing, the type of project it is, and of course, the overall cost of the project. But that's something that administrative services, a service, kind of an inside service they provide to the departments. And then letting landscape maintenance district funds set up. So just continuing to, since we consolidated, we consolidated it a couple of years ago, looking at moving it to a more of a fund basis rather than the way it is now, which is like a single fund in different departments within the fund. And now it just, it just enables clear tracking. And I shouldn't say clear, maybe more straightforward tracking. It simplifies it. And then Angela, if you have anything on the policy update 2020, add that.
So the policy update 2020, because we're not earning any more new awards, GFOA put out a new program where they're giving awards for those cities who have met the criteria of implementing a handful of what they've identified as key, both financial and non-financial city policies. So we already have a majority of them. And we're just working through to see, okay, yes, we have these ones and kind of consolidating them into a major, you know, here's our policy binder, kind of maybe digitize it so it's all together. And then we can submit that with maybe there's a new policy that we need to just have clarified. Maybe it's kind of sit in, within a policy that we already have existing and we just need to highlight it. And then we can send that off to GFOA and get another award.
Yeah, so thank you, Angela. So I, I didn't recognize it by the title, but I know, obviously I know we've been talking about the concept. So we have, as you know, the city has received apprehensive financial report awards, budget awards, the popular annual financial report awards. And then this would be, you know, those are all communication tools, like awards on basically how we, how we put things together and complete communicating tools for the public and for policymakers. And then this, as Angela just mentioned, this would be going one step beyond that to looking at all of our financial policies and best practices and making sure that they all are in fact as up to date as best practices they can be. With that, I'll just pause, just mayor, and ask questions.
Okay, does anybody have any questions about the administrative services portion? Anybody from council? Hi, any of the attendees?
First of all, I have no attendees raising their hand, so would you like me to run through the list?
Um, no, it's okay. I think it's okay. We've got, I can see on the screen if anybody's unmuted themselves or if they've got a hand up. So I think, I think we can probably move on. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so next up is community development. And these are the projects that, more specific projects that what we're looking at is move into the next fiscal year. So cottage housing, I mentioned that earlier. That is a, just a, a way to address some of the housing shortage and cost of, you know, cost of housing issues, but hopefully do it in a more Kattati-centric way. And this is more like, you know, more like a Charles Street Village type layout where you have centralized community facilities and houses, maybe smaller houses clustered around these central amenities. And then by right housing ordinance, the state is moving to more and more by right type housing. And so we want to make sure that we do what we can to make sure that the kind of housing that, that we have building by right meets to the degree we can, the sort of the Kattati, the Kattati vision, basically what's important to Kattati for the housing, so that we don't just get anywhere USA type housing popping up everywhere. Zoning map update, and that's just our zoning map, needs a couple of updates from some recent revisions. And with economic development work, we could also have, it could also kind of flow with that process, potentially at the end of that process. So affordable housing management program, you know, we have, we have an inclusionary ordinance that requires developments over nine units to build 15% of their housing as affordable stock. And we also have the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. And so there's a variety of ways that affordable housing gets created in Kattati. And right now, as the, as the housing becomes, or comes online, gets created, it's all deed restricted. And, you know, in theory, there is, when the property transacts, there is a, recorded documents on title will come up and the housing stock stays affordable because it's visible to everybody during the sale process. But this is like for sale type housing, to the extent that there's rental affordable housing as well. We don't currently have a, a program, sort of a, a fully formed program for managing that. It's been more managed as needs come up, as opposed to sort of a, you know, affordable housing surveillance and monitoring program. So part of it, you know, part of a good solution has been working with Housing Leon Trust, which we did for Woodland Hills. And, you know, we're hoping to take at least that model forward for a lot of this. Because I don't, I don't know that we're going to have, bigger cities, for example, will have staff people, they hire staff people to do stuff like this. We obviously would, would probably never be in that position, but we need to create a small city version that will, that will work for us financially, but also work for us in terms of making sure the affordable housing stock stays affordable. Economic development, marketing and implementation. So we're working on the ordinances, the first phase of the ordinances now. So that's the, once we get through that, that will be the implementation phase. But also letting people know, I mean, letting our existing businesses know, you know, what they can do, what kind of flexibility they have now, you know, what kind of, you know, what kind of things they can do that might enhance their business in, you know, in a way that, that we, you know, the, the community would like to see. And hopefully in a low risk, not very expensive way for them. And also marketing to the extent that would apply to some of our infill sites and making sure that they're aware of changes in policy as those come forward. And then website improvements, that's just continuing to work on in the community development context. It's continuing to make sure that information that, that the community would want to see about projects is continually built out or robust, as well as clear processes for, like for entitlement projects. Just trying to make, kind of put that stuff out on the website and make it as clear as possible so that when people come to do business with, with us, they have sort of a clear idea of what the steps are and what they need to do. And it's really just kind of making everything clearer, hopefully more straightforward for people. And then new legislation implementation, this is, it's been primarily focused on housing. I mean, there could be other elements as well, but housing has been the bulk of the push from the legislature. And I imagine, you know, once we, you know, once we hit the COVID issues we're dealing with right now, there may be more. But we still have implementation of the existing ones and we have a lot still that we're working on. And this includes the housing element update, which we're looking to initiate. It'd be probably a multi-year process, but it, because we're, it'd be coming up at the end of our current arena cycle. So we're looking at initiating our housing element update. And it's going to be with the new arena numbers that we expect to be getting this year. It'll be a much more intensive process compared to how it was in prior cycles. So that's the, community development, they're kind of overachievers in this one. So I have a second slide and then I'll pause. And sorry, that's a copy of that first bullet there. But we also have Jamie Lane Affordable Housing Entitlements. So Jamie Lane, that's the, in, in a good land development tradition, we, the project's named something that it, that nobody could find on a map. So Jamie Lane is Lion Lane, it's the corner of East Kattati and Ryan Lane. We've been working with Housing Land Trusts, as the council knows. We've been, we've been a partner in that project, creating those housing units. And they're looking to bring those entitlements here forward in the near future, or bringing them forward for entitlements in the near future. Getting to Jenny Blaker's comments or question earlier, the bike and pet master plan update is planned. I think later this calendar year. Noah, our community development director, is on the ABAG MTC Arena Methodology Committee. So that's, that's continue to take some of his time until those numbers start getting pushed out, that process winds down. Fletty Ranch rezoning, so right now it's, it's, it's owned residential, but we're looking at different types of zoning, given the operational plans in the future out there. Objective design standards, so this ties into the by right housing element I brought, I had mentioned earlier. So when things become discretionary or non-discretionary, basically ministerial type reviews for housing, then you need objective design standards you can apply to them. So objective means that they're not subjective, so they're not discretionary, right? So this is an opportunity for the, you know, for the, for all of us in the community to come together and decide what we want to see in the housing stock that gets built in the future. And the objective design standards provides at least one tool to try to ensure that as by right type housing comes through, that we can overlay a template on it essentially and kind of make sure that they, as much as possible, kind of fit the aesthetic that we want to see. So vehicle miles traveled, significance threshold. So this has been, this is, this law is several years old, but it's just implemented now. You know, for SEQA, in terms of transportation, they typically evaluate SEQA thresholds of significance historically by levels of service. So that's a, that's a methodology that's very much driven by how intersections operate. And that's so-called LOS type significance threshold has been something that's been in place for a long time to determine whether an impact is significant under SEQA. The change in state law, which is implemented, can be implemented now, changes that. So level of service is no longer a SEQUA threshold of significance. It, it turns into a, it still can be a criteria for projects, but it's not a SEQUA criteria. It's moving to the vehicle mile traveled. And this is to try to reduce greenhouse gas emissions. So try to encourage more compact, that mixed use development. And then finally, the last two here, Santero Way Specific Plan Update. You know, given our experiences with the apartment project and just what we, you know, what kind of where things are going in terms of the sort of macroeconomic and even county economic type pictures. And it's, it's a good time if, if development wants to move forward there. This is a potential that we may want to bring this forward and have a community discussion about, you know, are, are we seeing what we want there? Does this still make sense? Are there, is there, is there something else that would make more sense? Some tweaks to that existing specific plan. And then the last one, the DSP consistency update, that's just, as I recall, just, if we have the opportunity to just update the plan for some. uh, if we have the opportunity to just update the plan for some, um, uh, inconsistencies in different parts of it, just to make it clear for people to implement both city staff, but also, um, when people are trying to do infill developments in the DSP area, they have a, um, clear idea of what sort of standard they need to meet with the development. So, um, with that, I, I'll just pause in case, uh, first of all, Noah has anything else to add that I didn't touch on yet?
Uh, yeah, thank you, Damian and, uh, Mayor Stilman, members of the council, just members of the public, uh, who are tuning in. Just briefly, uh, obviously this is a pretty ambitious list. Um, it's kind of a combination of things that the state has told us we have to do and things that we've identified internally, uh, and also from, from some input from the community of things that, that we should definitely look to, to be trying to take care of. Um, I don't know that we're gonna be able to take care of it all in the next year, so we would appreciate some council input on priorities if there's anything that, uh, is definitely a, a high priority for the council. We do hope to have the Jamie Lane Affordable Housing Entitlements, uh, completed prior to moving into the next fiscal year. Uh, so just so you know, that is moving forward. To put a date on the bicycle pedestrian master plan, we're looking at, at, uh, late summer, early fall of this year to complete that. The SB seven forty-three significance thresholds requirements, the state has mandated July first for those, so, uh, we're pivoting over to those, um, in addition to the cottage housing, uh, after just getting the AD ordinance completed by internal staff. And then just to speak a little bit to the, the website improvements, we're looking to, um, both meet some of the mandated requirements from some of the housing legislation through that and also to create some additional opportunities for expanded public outreach and engagement. I mean, obviously we're all sitting here today, uh, in kind of a unique circumstance and, and we, we anticipate the need to try to come up with some new and creative methods for public engagement. Um, we're looking at, uh, maybe mandating some neighborhood meetings, uh, for development before they actually file applications to let the community members directly around the development know what's happening. Um, at a minimum, sending notice of applications with, uh, direct links to all the project docs that we're putting on our website. So we've, we've spent some time building out the website to kind of expand the transparency of development projects. So the first time the community's hearing about it isn't when it's going to a public hearing. We want to talk to folks earlier, um, in the process. And those are kind of just some of the things I really wanted to highlight. In addition to, uh, the, the Affordable Housing Management, that, that's, that's gonna be critical for us, um, given that the state is mandating more affordable housing. We have kind of these, these internal requirements for certain percentages of all of our housing projects to provide affordable housing. So we really do see that as critical to being able to manage that, uh, kind of stock in the long term. And then also creating some maybe potential local preference policies around our, uh, affordable housing stocks. So as these projects move forward, we have strict criteria as to who and how, uh, applicants for those projects are prioritized and putting existing members of the community, uh, in first place for those units as they become available. So that's kind of just to put a little bit more, um, specificity into the list. Uh, and I'm happy to help with any questions, um, if there's any from the council that, uh, Damian would like me to chime in on.
Okay, great. Um, we've got a hand up from Councilmember Law, so you wanna go ahead, John?
Great, thank you very much, Mayor Stilman. Um, I just want to comment on one of the things that Noah brought up. And, uh, you know, I've been a huge proponent of this forever, and that's getting information out to the public on any kind of a related project, especially if it's a development in advance. I mean, it'll help get a better project potentially, uh, certainly something that wouldn't raise as many eyebrows in a specific neighborhood. And I think it just helps the city get buy-in, or it helps the developers too, get buy-in before they commit too far down the road. So I just wanted to point that out because I think that's a real critical thing to do. Thank you.
Okay, great. Anything else from council? All right, seeing nobody rushing for the unmute button. Um, if, or if you can call on the attendees, I see one hand up, I believe that was for, Mr. Hancock.
Yes, Mr. Hancock, if you'd like to speak, go ahead.
Yes, hello. Um, you're unmuted by this, good. Um, so I just wanted to speak to again the, um, the bicycle and pedestrian master plan update and of course with the sort of B and T side of things. Um, I mean, particularly as we have more densification, we're likely to see if the normal pattern occurs, that there's more traffic, which just causes more issues with the MT and how to actually reduce it. When I'm talking to people, the big issue about, um, particularly getting people out on bicycles is, is the safety aspect and just feeling safe on the roads. And I mean, there is a statement on the, um, um, the, the state about Vision Zero, how do you actually reduce fatalities, um, on the roads? Um, and we just don't want to have those. With the Highway one one six, uh, aspects that are coming along, that is a Caltrans highway. And so if we don't have our, um, plan in place for that, it's very hard to communicate with them. So I, I just hope we support getting the, um, you know, the bicycle and pedestrian plan up to date and particularly with that zone. Um, we have the e-bike share program coming along, so it's another opportunity as well to try and put the message out there or try and find out what is a way of really having people enjoy being out. I don't think it's a case of, of lecturing people, um, on how to reduce their BMT, but how can we actually, so, so I'm just saying that I think if, if it can be a good outreach program as well for this and just some, I just don't know, natural thinking on how to actually, um, speak to that issue of enjoying being outdoors, enjoying biking and make the infrastructure there to meet that. So thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Gonna call on the other two attendees and just see if they have anything else to add?
Sure. Jenny Blaker, do you have anything that you would like to speak on?
No, thank you, I'm fine. Thank you for checking in.
And Ms. Alderman?
No, no comment.
Okay, great. Um, so do you wanna move on to the next slide, Ms. Jobe?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So, um, we'll attempt to move on here. There we go. All right, so Public Works is another sort of traditionally overachieving, um, in terms of number of projects. I'll run through them pretty quick. So Portal Avenue Main Replacement is a water main. Um, Portal Avenue is an industrial section of Catati and, um, and the Water Master Plan is due for replacement. Well, one A and three water treatment facilities. So we, um, we have three municipal wells, um, in Catati as well as two connections to the Sonoma County Water Agency's wholesale system. And, um, two of our three wells, so two of our three municipal wells have, uh, treatment systems on them, um, just to re, basically to remove minerals from the groundwater. And, um, the media that is used to do that, it's like a sand media, used to be replaced, um, periodically, so. So that's, and then inflow and infiltration reduction. So this is our, um, our sanitary sewer system. So all, um, all gravity type systems, in other words, not pressurized pipes, but gravity type pipes. Like our sewer system is subject to some amount of inflow, which is like direct water inflow, like through manholes and that sort of. And infiltration, which would typically happen like at manholes or at joints and pipes, um, from groundwater that comes up in the wintertime. And, you know, the more that you get in your sewer system, the more you have to pump around and the more you have to treat. Pumping and treating, all that is expensive, so it's, um, it's a relatively high bang for your buck to go after these, um, kind of leaks, if you will, in the system and tighten them up. So street improvement project, again, this, um, uh, we're, we would be, as you know, under, we're in design, as you know, um, for the, uh, for the next year's street project. And, um, so next year we'll be in construction for it. And at the same time, we're also starting to design for the following fiscal year, that's the twenty twenty-one street improvements project design. So we have the five-year street CIP and, um, we're just continuing to work through that, um, as, as we have budget. And then, um, Citywide Bike and Ped Safety Improvements, this is just a annual program, um, that we've had historically and we would propose to continue it, to do, um, to do pickup, just kind of pick up miscellaneous bike and ped safety projects that, um, that, that may present themselves. West School Street Pathway Project, um, it says phase two, it's really just, um, moving into construction next year for the project that was already signed. And, um, as you know, it was bid, but the bid came, the bids came in high, so we would be looking to put this back out to bid, uh, later in the year. And then, um, Overroad Highway Traffic Flow Improvements, um, this is primarily, um, signal, uh, synchronization to reduce, I think ideally it reduces idle time for cars just idling at lights, but also, um, includes the design of, um, a new controlled intersection and traffic signal at William and George. So, um, crossing upgrades at Laguna and Commerce, this is the Class One Bike and Pedestrian Looking to add enhancements there at that, at the crossing to make it safer for pedestrians and bicyclists. Uh, wavefinding phase two, so the wavefind, wavefinding program, everyone knows about that, I think at this point, um, they're in construction for phase one. There will be a phase two, which will, um, complete all of the wavefinding sign locations that were discussed during that process. So that would be, um, something proposed for next year. Trash management, Area One, so, um, with our, with our new, um, stormwater management permit, our stormwater permit from the, uh, it's an MPDS permit from the Regional Water Board, we had to develop a trash management plan and, um, and as part of that plan, you have to commit to, um, sort of systematically working through your, your, um, ground drain system and adding enhancements to, um, reduce the amount of trash that ends up in, in waterways and creeks. So Helen Putnam Dog Park and fencing, um, is something that is being proposed for the next kind of park project. You know, this year we're in design, uh, we're just starting to design for the Catati Park Playground upgrades and that would get constructed in, like, twenty twenty-one, but then, um, we, just like we do with the street project, um, program, we would be, as we construct one, we're moving on design for another. And, um, the next one sort of in line at the moment that we're proposing is, um, Putnam Park for some elements of it. And then, um, the Civic Center Roof and Refurbishments, that's, um, is in the, in this current year's budget, but we're looking at, um, we're in design right now, we're looking to actually construct both these, these actually next three bullets. So Civic Center Roof, Civic Center Miscellaneous Improvements, like windows and things like that, painting, and then City Hall repainting. So, um, all of those are kind of, let's say bundled together and, um, kind of working their way through the design process here, um, just starting and then construction next year. So I believe that, yeah, so that's it for Public Works and I'll just pause here, see if Craig first has anything else he wants to add before we hand it over to the mayor.
Uh, this is Craig. Um, I have nothing more to add. Thank you, Damian.
Okay, so if we have any question, council?
Yes, Madam Mayor, this is, uh, Mark, if I might, I wanted to ask, Damian, as usual, a nice long list of things and this is obviously a time we're not looking to be expansive certainly, but there's one thing that, uh, I wanted to ask if we could include that has been put off for more than a few years now, and that would be the completion of the curved, uh, wooden seating area for the Northern Gateway Project. Obviously, this is a time, at this point in spring, it's something we can't use as a public, but I know that isn't forever. And, uh, so when that time comes, I'd love people to be able to sit there as was originally planned, those with a bike to sit. So I wonder where that's at and if that's something that we could just flag to fit in where it may fit in. Thank you.
Um, yeah, I, I mean, I, I think we'd be happy to, uh, put that in the mix and bring it back during the budget process.
Yeah, thank you. This, this wouldn't be a time I'm looking for things to add or new things, but this is just something, I remember telling somebody about a year after we did it, and this was several years ago, oh yeah, no, the bench will be coming probably this summer. I've learned not to say that anymore, so we're a few years behind on that and, and obviously would be a great thing to finish. So if it works out great, obviously, there are a lot of other priorities too, and I recognize that, but I wanted to put it in there just to make sure we, it doesn't go by the wayside accident. Thank you all.
Okay, anything else from council? All right, not seeing or hearing anything, it looks like we've got, uh, one of the attendees with their hands up inside, Jenny Blaker, if you can call on her please, Lauren?
Jenny, please go ahead.
Sorry, um, just a quick clarification and I apologize, I may have missed something here. Um, Helen Putnam Park, Dog Park and Fencing, I was thinking that the Dog Park was being moved to one of the other parks, um, in which case why would there be more work being done on the Helen Putnam Dog Park now? And I apologize if I, if I just haven't followed the story correctly. Thank you.
Okay, Jenny, any questions for that?
Sure, yeah, so, um, in the Park Capital Plan, the concept is that the, uh, Dog Park at Helen Putnam move from its current location to a location closer to the parking area. And, um, and the fencing, as I recall, is the fencing around the, uh, baseball field. Cause right now it's this, I mean, as you, as you all probably know, it's, it's kind of a chain link, temporary-ish, um, type fencing and, uh, moving to more permanent looking fencing there. And also fencing for the Dog Park, I apologize.
Okay, sounds good. So, um, we're ready to, um, from Public Works?
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, so police, um, so this is something that, um, we've been doing for a couple of years now and, uh, actually, uh, Mike, our chief, has been sort of the lead on this, um, among all the small agencies in the county trying to, um, work together for, um, criminal investigations. A couple, uh, well, a year ago or so, the, the county sheriff, um, uh, made some changes to policy, which, um, made it more advantageous for small agencies to, to, uh, to get together and, um, work together in a cooperative way when there's any sort of criminal investigation that would require mutual aid. So like, for example, um, you know, the, uh, the recent, um, stabbing that occurred in that RuPaul downtown? So that was an example of where, besides this Catati, we had other agencies, through this mutual aid, um, the small agencies respond, in, including the district attorney. So it's a, it's a, um, it's turning out to be a really good model that both seems to function well, but also, um, be just more logical from a fiscal standpoint compared to where the county is heading, the county sheriff. Active shooter exercises with SSU and Thomas Page, this is something that, um, that our chief is constantly, um, working with SSU to try to set up. Um, SSU is a great, a great venue for that because, and schools in general are, because they typ, they typically are largely vacant or parts of them are vacant during the summer, so you can have these kind of exercises and not freak everybody out. But they do happen, so you want to be able to, uh, be prepared and work together and know what you're all doing. Surveillance camera registration, so right now we do like alarm permitting, building alarm permitting, where people that have building alarms would register those with us, so that if they go off, we'll, you know, we kind of know where they are and who they are. It just helps in response. So surveillance camera, um, if people have their own, you know, surveillance systems, allowing them to register with the police just gives us, um, uh, more information so that if there's a, uh, a crime of some sort in some area and we know who in that area has surveillance cameras, we already kind of, um, know who they are and we can quickly contact them. contact them. This would be a voluntary thing, of course, but, um, would allow us to quickly contact them and, and hopefully get footage and try to solve crimes quicker. Um, pedestrian safety, education enforcement, so we've already been doing, um, a bit of this this year with some of the crossing decoys that we did, and, um, and we're continuing to do, and being proposed to continue to, continue to do this, um, and a lot of the enforcement is, it's been in different parts of the city, um, I think recently, the Charles Street Downtown area, but certainly some of the areas where there's kind of pedestrian hotspots where there's a lot of pedestrians, and then there's, there's a lot of driver education that needs to occur to make sure that it's safe for pedestrians to cross. Um, emergency operations training, so, um, I mentioned earlier tonight that we, um, you know, we updated our emergency operations plan, which the chief is a critical piece of, and, um, uh, you know, plan is, the plan is the first step, right? And we, uh, we're continuing to train the, not only the people that are, are involved intimately in the planning, but also other staff, so we're continuing to work on that, on, you know, getting people fully up to speed with our plans and making sure they know what to do when there is an emergency. And we've had a couple of live trainings, you know, with, um, of course, with the PSPs and the one we're in now, so people are getting very familiar with it. Um, interview room video upgrade, so we have, um, just video systems for the interview rooms at the police station, and, um, the, uh, video camera, um, technology is very old, it's EHS, which, um, you know, even my mom doesn't have a Player Four anymore, so, uh, the DA doesn't have them either, and so we need to move to a more modern technology that, that the DA can accept. And then police building electronic door lock replacement, um, you probably all know that the police department has electronic locks throughout it, um, I believe in many cases, it's, it's, uh, probably a DOJ requirement as well, um, at least in some areas, and, um, you know, for being able, being able to track who passes through what doors when, and that system is getting fairly old now, I mean, the building was built in 2004, and in the service, I think, in 2005, so, um, those locks are starting to have issues. And then the, um, the Bola Wrap, uh, less lethal, it's a, it's a tool that, um, that our police department wants to try out and see if it is, um, a useful tool, and so, um, for those of you that don't know, and it's not a problem, because I didn't know what it was until the chief started talking to me about it, and that's a, um, sort of a deployable, um, he calls it kind of Batman tech, where it basically shoots out a rope and it wraps around you, wraps around your legs, wraps around your arms, and this could primarily be useful when you're dealing with people with, um, kind of mental breakdown of, you know, mental breakdowns or mental episodes of some type, where, you know, uncompliant with verbal orders, and, um, they need to be basically brought down to the ground, um, and whenever you do that, whenever you get hands-on with somebody to try to, um, apprehend them or restrain them, you know, it's, it's, it's never pretty, right? And it always results, not always, but it can often result in injury to our officers or the, um, the person, the subject that's being apprehended. So if there's an opportunity to try a different tool that can defuse that quickly and nobody gets hurt, it could be, um, it could be better, I know it's been used in some other areas, and so we were, uh, we were looking at trying a, uh, sort of initial batch of those and just seeing with our, um, our supervising officers if it is something that is a useful tool or not. And, um, so that'll pause and just let the chief chime in if he has anything else he needs to add, wants to add to this.
Uh, actually, I do, uh, Mayor, can you hear me?
Yes, indeed.
All right, good, um, so there's something that did not migrate to the proposed project slide here, and that's the implementation of the, of the automatic license plate reader system, and so I've already procured, um, two mobile license plate readers, I don't possess them, but I did get them through a grant, through a Homeland Security grant, and at some point, uh, during, um, next fiscal year, I want to deploy the automated license plate readers, which simply record license plates, they don't run license plates, they don't have the technology to run license plates, but they record license plates, so if there's a crime, um, in an area of our city where our license plate reader recorded a certain plate, uh, it would help us solve that crime. Additionally, for example, if there was a stolen car loaded up in a, in the database, it could be stolen from anywhere, and if it passed through Catati and, uh, our mobile license plate reader picked that up, it would immediately notify dispatch and actually the car computer, the NBC in the car. Um, beyond that, um, I'd like to get some fixed license plate readers, and that would be by, um, securing those who are auto theft passports here in Sonoma County. Um, I'm not sure if that's going to happen, I'm trying to make that happen, and so, um, time will tell. Um, and I think that was everything.
Yeah, thanks, Chief. All right, Mayor, so, um, if you, if anyone has any questions, please feel free.
Yeah, are there any questions from council on the projects for the police department? Okay, any attendees who want to put their hands up for us? Sorry, that was a bad police joke. Okay, oh, I see a hand, okay, hang on just a second. Uh, Lauren, it looks like, um, Ms. Alderman has a question or a comment.
Hey, Ms. Alderman, go ahead.
Hi, um, you guys need to work on, have a project of working on the NICSOS, we've had two murders now that we've had in the last year, and we've not received a NICSO within, um, I think 12 hours was the only one, this last one, we didn't receive a NICSO, and it's endangering the community to not have the community involvement that needs and, during these times, we didn't know, um, with the stabbing downtown, we did not know, um, from the information on the internet and everything that, that whether the person was, um, you know, uh, um, loose in the town, I'm not using the right words, but, um, or whether they were, we hear, hear 24 hours later that, that they were arrested right there, but, uh, the internet is saying they're at loose in a bloody shirt. So these problems need to be addressed in the NICSO system of, and during this emergency also, the NICSO, the coronavirus, we have not received any NICSOs on how things are going or anything like that, so they need, you guys need to get up on your NICSOs. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Um, and I don't see anybody else raising a hand, so, um, I guess we can move on to the next section, thank you.
Thanks, Mayor. Um, all right, so, uh, that's the departments, and I just wanted to say that this, this is just another thing that's been out there that, um, has been, I think all of us have been getting emails about it lately, is another thing that's out there, I don't know yet what that means, but it is out there. And I will say that, um, like we were talking about earlier with the, some of the budget stuff, you know, we're gonna, we will be, um, at the, uh, budget workshop, I think, having a deeper discussion about some of our, you know, um, some of our financial projections and, um, and starting to talk about, um, the community survey and, um, as part of the revenue projections, you know, what, what does that mean, what does that mean for, um, you know, for Measure G moving forward, and I'm just putting it out there that I expect that we'll have, you know, more discussions in the near future on that. But that's, um, so Mayor, that is, that is it for the presentation right now, um, let's see if there's any questions.
Um, I see a hand from Councilwoman Delott, so, you want to go ahead, John?
Great, thank you, Mayor Skelman, um, this is, uh, I, I have just a couple of questions that came up in the different discussions I heard, and thank everybody for, um, you know, all the presentations and the public too, for your participation in this, uh, different style of public meeting. Um, one is, and, and I'm not looking for any answers tonight, Damian, but one is something we had brought up a little while back about the agreement with SMART and the use of the train station, as we know, releasing that to SMART, and as we also know, it's never been open or used for the public, so, um, I guess the question I have, and again, not looking for any answers to right now, is, uh, when does that agreement terminate or should we terminate it, and do we want to terminate it? But I just think it might be one of those topics we might want to bring up if we have a use for that building, which I think we probably do, so that's one question. Um, another one, this goes back to Angelo's earlier presentation, um, thank you for those projections, they are indeed projections, but I think we need something to work off of, um, and, you know, as we've been seeing the, um, possible number of deaths in the United States through COVID-19, there's been some horrific figures, but within a week, we've gone from 240,000 to 60,000. Now, 60,000 is still an unacceptable number in my opinion, however, um, it's, it's kind of out of everybody's control right now, but we are doing a good job in what we've been doing certainly here in California, so thank you for that. Those projections, I think, are critical because it's, it's a base for us to work off of, but I'm just wondering, um, with this pandemic that we have, knowing kind of likely that something similar to this will potentially come back in fall, winter, um, and I'm just wondering if we have, uh, thought of some maybe different financial strategies to be even more prepared just from a financial standpoint for the city's future? So I'm just throwing, again, just throwing that one out there, and, um, and that was it, thank you.
Okay, go ahead.
Oh, I was just gonna, um, if Angelo has anything to add, she can add to that, but, um, uh, with regard to the second comment, um, I think, uh, you know, I think the, I think the main strategy is just being fiscally prudent, like, um, the council has been in building reserves, and, um, you know, working on projections and trying to forecast where you're going to be so that you can, um, budget appropriately and, um, not over, kind of overshoot your runway in terms of expenditures as, as these things are forecast in the future. I think that's the, I think that's the primary thing right now, as we're kind of going through a period of turmoil. Angelo, do you have anything you want to add to that?
So Damian, I don't know if you maybe want to, I know we've had discussions office, um, but really kind of going back to how we talked about in mid-year, the biggest foundation for our revenue streams are sales tax. And in this city, we have, um, our key sales tax drivers, um, so we have Lowe's, we have, um, the, uh, medicinal marijuana, and then we have gas, so those are really a majority of our key sales tax drivers. We also have the county pool, which, online sales, all those kinds of things, so with ways they're coming into place, which is the, uh, not to go deep into it, basically we'll be able to collect a lot more, um, sales tax from internet based. So because those are our key revenue streams, and they are not being identified as significantly impacted, we're not seeing a significant impact outside of the, um, state allowing them to extend this quarterly tax payment, um, so if they extend that again for the next quarter, then that's going to again, again be another addition, because these businesses, we're assuming they're going to use that as an advantage to continue to increase their cash flow for both the businesses that need it as well as those that don't necessarily need it because they're going to have the cash on hand. Um, so we're not, so we are going to have some losses, we are going to see, you know, businesses that are not, um, are going to have, they are having a really difficult time, and we're even doing small things here at City Hall, like making sure we go out and support those local, you know, restaurants and stuff and some of the business, um, my daughter really looks forward to going to Subway, getting a family act or going to, you know, Oliver's and trying to get what we can, um, we are seeing a small decline and, uh, even before this happened in, um, gas tax, that was just because of gas prices coming down, and that's continuing to happen, so we're keeping an eye on that because that plays in both to the gas tax as well as the sales tax piece of it. And so, like I've said, even though they are projections, we are really following them closely and paying attention to our industry drivers, who are the main, um, piece of our revenue sources, um, and we'll continue to do so with working with HDL, as well as participating in these big advisory panels, um, through DFOA, CSMFO, um, and seeing what they're seeing, maybe, that's maybe happening on a more globalized scale, um, that could impact those, um, streams that are kind of down the line, because it's, it is a global impact, it's not just our neighborhood, like, if my local grand shop can't get rice because it's affected in China, then they're not going to be able to produce the product to sell here, so we are trying to pay attention to that as much as we can, um, and the theaters too, and every other, you know, so we, we are looking to that and we'll continue to do that.
Thank you, Angela, so, um, one thing you touched on that I think is worth repeating because it's an important point, um, aside from just being, um, fiscally conservative, building reserves, um, you know, kind of not outspending your capacity, right? The, um, the other part of that strategy that, that we've been on for several years now is diversification of revenue, and so the more, um, like any, like any business or any municipal government, the wider your sort of base of, um, resources, the more likely you're going to be able to weather any particular type of turbulence economically, so just wanted to say that I think we're doing the right things, um, it's just, it's just going to be incumbent upon us to, um, just try to be as, um, fiscally prudent as possible as we move into the budget process.
Okay, do you have any more comments or questions from council? Um, councilman, sorry, Vice Mayor.
Hi, uh, I just wanted to, um, to thank the staff on the report, I think the transparency is, uh, very good, uh, and I recognize that we're in such a fluid situation that it's really hard to have anything that's concrete, but I do, uh, appreciate all the work that's been put into this and, and in light of the current crisis that's going on, uh, I commend you guys for hanging in there and continuing to do the work that you've done so well so far, so thank you.
Yes, I know it sounded a bit teasing, um, any other comments from council? Okay, so is that it for our presentation? Damian?
That's the end of the formal presentation, but if there's anything else, we're all here, happy to answer.
Okay, um, I'm not seeing anything from councils or anything, last comments or questions from attendees?
All right, I see no raised hands.
Okay, well, if there's nothing else and nobody's going to quickly interrupt me, um, I will just say thank you for everybody for attending, it's a very unusual format and it's going to take some getting used to, but thank you so much to staff and council and the members of the public who were able to attend tonight, please everybody, uh, stay safe and be careful out there.
Yes, thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Okay, well, with that, everybody have a good evening, and, um, we will see you all soon, everybody take care, and we will adjourn the meeting at 7:52.